And I guess Bill, if you can keep track of all the department heads that are coming in.
Yes, I can do that. I just found out the gallery view. I hadn't used that before. It's kind of like Brady Bunch. It's awesome.
I'm afraid to hit too many buttons here. I'm not sure what. Okay, and we are live on TV right now. I just got a text from Will Woody, so I want you all to know that you are out to the public at this point. And I'm waiting to hear if Doug Glassbell is online yet.
I just texted him.
Okay.
Having problems with it or something.
And do... Greg, can you tell who's on and who's not?
I can. Stand by. We have Mayor Bowman, Judge Brown, Emily Boyko, Ann Morgan Thaler, Barbara Bynum, Bill Bell, Blaine Hall, Ix.
Is Jim Shid on? Is he coming?
Yeah, Jim's on. Sorry, I don't have my mouse.
If you put it on gallery view, you can see everybody. So up in the top right of your screen, there's two buttons. One makes it full screen and the other changes between speaker view and gallery view. And if you click on gallery view, then you'll be able to see everybody and you can kind of see people nodding or raising their hand or...
Okay, I at least have, I can see who's on. Gallery, huh?
Top right corner.
Barbara, for me, that's top left corner.
Oh, really? Okay. I'm on a computer, not an iPad, so I guess it could be different.
Okay, I see ya.
Mr. Mayor, Doug's on now.
Okay, so I think everybody is here. I'm still playing with his gallery view, alright. Um, so I guess at this point, we'll go ahead and start. This is Monday, March thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty. It is three minutes after ten. And the first thing on the agenda is municipal court annual report. So Dick Brown, you're up.
Alright, uh, thank you so much, everyone. And, uh, thank you for letting me, uh, call in. Uh, I hope that everybody got the report. Uh, we, uh, sent an email one out to, uh, everyone. So I'll just hit the highlights of that. But first of all, um, and in terms of our present, uh, situation, uh, we, we've had several telephone conferences with Blaine and Bill and, and the mayor, uh, leading up to, uh, the city going to tier four. And, uh, we, we met with the, um, uh, police department and city attorney, Rachel, of course, uh, with that to, uh, decide how to really handle the court here. So I entered, uh, two administrative, uh, orders. Uh, one really just before we went to tier four in terms of dealing with the, uh, cases in court where the public was excluded from the building as such. And we met with them behind glass, uh, at sanitizing, uh, stations and, uh, respected separation. We did that for one court date and it worked reasonably, uh, well. And then, uh, when the city went to, uh, uh, tier four, then on March twenty-third, uh, we, um, entered another administrative, uh, order, uh, so that, and that's posted at the door and, uh, on the website. So that we're dealing with the cases, uh, at home, phone, fax, uh, email and so on and so forth. Uh, basically, we've continued, uh, all the cases as such for, uh, eight weeks. Uh, the clerks have been, uh, calling people and, uh, we set out written notices to everyone. Uh, and, and, uh, what we're doing with this is in harmony with the Supreme Court directive by, uh, uh, Supreme Court Justice Nathan Coats on March sixteenth and also, uh, by the Chief Judge for the Southern Judicial District, uh, Judge Patrick, uh, who entered an order on, uh, uh, March eighteenth, uh, as well. So, uh, everything we're doing at this point is, is in harmony with all of that and we'll adjust it as we need to. Um, one of the main problems would be, uh, uh, trials. Uh, we have a constitutional issue with, uh, speedy trials. And so if a defendant, for example, would not agree to a continuance uh, within the ninety-one day rule for municipal court, uh, we would have to dismiss the, uh, case. But we haven't had to do that yet. Uh, we had three pending trials and those have been continued out, uh, to, uh, late May. Uh, we're right up against the ninety-one day rule, but, uh, we have a lot of breathing room, uh, at this point in time. Plus, we have set three more trials and again, we set those, uh, towards the end of the, uh, ninety-one day rule, uh, as far out as, as we could. So hopefully we'll be, uh, in okay shape with that. Uh, but if it gets to that point, then, uh, R- Rachel, uh, or Matt, if he's on board, will, uh, make a de- a decision as to what to do with the, uh, case. Uh, another issue, um, uh, for us is, uh, bench warrants. Uh, we're, we're respecting, uh, the, uh, separation. Uh, we, again, we've had meetings with the police department and Emily, uh, particularly, and with, uh, Tim Cox, for example. And, uh, so we entered another administrative order, uh, just asking the police department to just tell people, instead of arresting them, just tell them that they have a warrant, which they, most of them know anyway, and to contact the court within the three business days, uh, so we can give them a date far out, uh, uh, when we can actually meet with them. Uh, so, and I believe, uh, Tim, uh, says this works for them. Uh, so, and we're respecting the jail too. We don't want to put, uh, people in jail unless we absolutely, uh, have to. It doesn't mean the police department would not arrest somebody if they actually needed to, but this certain, certainly gives them a lot of flexibility, uh, for that. And, uh, Blaine can speak to that more if he likes. But, uh, I think we're okay with all of that and we'll modify all of this as we, uh, uh, need to. Uh, we had, uh, leading up to this, uh, we've been having some meetings with the, um, can't remember how many we had, I think three, uh, maybe four, but with the, uh, city attorney and, uh, police department, uh, uh, I think Blaine was at one and the commanders, uh, were at the others. Uh, in terms of updating the municipal traffic code, what we need to look at and, uh, the code provisions themselves, some that are a little outdated and so on and so forth. And, uh, we're putting that on hold until this is over and then we'll get back to that. We've actually, uh, completed going through the, uh, model traffic code and we're ready to start on the regular code, uh, at this point in time. Uh, in terms of, uh, the actual report, um, you know, most of it is fairly self-explanatory, so I'll, I'll just kind of hit some highlights. Uh, our cases for, um, last year, two thousand nineteen was, uh, one thousand five hundred fifty cases. Uh, down really a hundred to a hundred and fifty cases from the previous, uh, two years. Uh, that's a critical of the traffic, uh, mostly. We're actually down, uh, three hundred cases, uh, in traffic cases from, uh, uh, two thousand eighteen. And correspondingly, uh, with that, the revenue is down, uh, roughly ten thousand dollars. Again, mostly related to traffic. We actually had an increase in revenue in, uh, some areas. Uh, the revenue from traffic was down, uh, about the nineteen thousand, uh, dollars, uh, with that. I expect that will, um, uh, rectify itself as, uh, this, um, as, as we get past this period and, uh, with the public safety tax, uh, where more officers are, uh, uh, added on. Uh, so we'll be gearing up for more cases when this is, uh, uh, all over with. The revenue, uh, was a hundred, almost a hundred seventy thousand dollars, uh, down ten thousand from, uh, two thousand eighteen. Again, it was the traffic. In terms of the useful public service, uh, uh, we, uh, actually enrolled, uh, a hundred more people on useful public service than we did the previous, uh, year. Uh, we're using that more. Uh, you can see, uh, in the report that, uh, jail was utilized less than it was, uh, previously. Uh, and one of the reasons for that is, uh, because we cannot, uh, issue bench warrants for people who, uh, fail to pay or even if they fail to appear and they have failed to pay, we can do that, uh, for, uh, useful public service. So if a person fails to appear for their useful public service, uh, we can actually issue a bench warrant for that and give it to court to discuss what's going on and, uh, so on and so forth. Um, so it's, it's been a good tool. The revenue, uh, for that was up about forty-five hundred dollars, something like that. Um, we, right now, we're postponing useful public service, of course, to, uh, uh, eliminate the contact. Uh, several of the work sites, of course, um, are not active. So we're telling everybody that, uh, uh, just contact us. We'll give you a new date. And when this, uh, uh, is, uh, over with, then, uh, we'll, uh, resume the useful public service and, uh, get that, uh, up and going. One, one interesting thing, uh, you may have noticed on the, um, second page of the, uh, report, uh, for people who, uh, pay their, uh, fine fees and costs in full, as an alternative to actually doing twenty-four hours of useful public service, they can donate to, uh, some, uh, veterinary clinics and, uh, chow down, uh, or buy, uh, people food that we give to Sharing Ministries. And, uh, several people elected to, uh, do that, uh, by the way. And so there was a total of a little over six thousand dollars that was, uh, generated for, mostly for animals. Kind of interesting, uh, very few for people and, uh, uh, virtually all of it went for, uh, uh, animals. So, uh, it's working, uh, reasonably, uh, reasonably well. Uh, in terms of juvenile cases, um, we actually had more juvenile cases this year than we had, uh, uh, last year, uh, by a, by a fair number. Um, and, and it still includes the, uh, alcohol ones, of course, cannabis, uh, the vaping, the new ordinance that the coun- uh, council passed. We've had several of those, uh, uh, those cases as well. Um, we're not doing, uh, juvenile deferreds nearly as much as, uh, we were in the, uh, past. And, and the main reason for that is because, um, under a law that went into effect last year, um, um, we're using, uh, expungement. Uh, juveniles are entitled to have their record expunged if they complete their sentence. And most of them are pretty darn good, uh, about it. We have some that don't, of course. And, uh, with the, uh, city attorney's, uh, office, um, and ourselves, uh, by the time, uh, the juvenile gets their sentence completed, takes a little, there's a little bit of time that goes on with that. But they eventually get their charge, uh, dismissed and the record expunged for them. It works really well when they're going to the military, uh, on the college and so on and so forth. So it works fine. Um, and so really between, uh, that and, uh, teen court, uh, which I'll talk about in two seconds here, uh, there's just almost no need for a juvenile, uh, uh, deferment, if you, if you will. Um, in terms of teen court, uh, that's probably the biggest casualty, uh, uh, one of the significant ones of all of this going on. Uh, teen court, uh, was up and going, uh, really, uh, pretty strongly. We had a total of, uh, ten teen court defendants in trials, uh, for the, uh, school year. We had more scheduled, but, uh, we, uh, canceled, of course, uh, April and now May. So we're, we're not doing teen court at all. But we had great participation. Um, we met in, uh, August of last year and with the help of Phoebe Benzinger, um, we met with the school board, had a nice, nice meeting and, uh, just got terrific support from the, uh, school board. The end result is that, um, teen court is being run through Martin Maloney's government, the classes. We had five classes participate. In fact, we had almost more people than we've ever had in teen court, uh, in terms of classes participating. So, uh, and then I believe we're all set for next year, uh, unless something has changed that we don't know about from a school, uh, perspective. Uh, we'll continue to do this next year and, uh, get it, uh, uh, up and going. We were going to invite the council to come to the, uh, last teen court session, which would have been in May. But again, that's been, uh, uh, been put on hold. So, uh, I, I, I think that's about it. Happy, of course, to, uh, answer any, um, uh, questions here. I know Emily's, uh, on the line, so either Emily or myself would be, uh, very, very happy to do that, uh, from that standpoint. So I will, uh, hush up and, uh, if, uh, entertain any questions, uh, if anybody has any.
I have a question. Uh, Judge Brown, this is Barbara Bynum. I had a constituent ask me how the list of useful public service was compiled. Who get, which organizations can be on that list and, and can additional ones propose that they be added to that list?
Yeah, and, and that's a flexible list. Uh, some we've taken off, some we've added. Uh, the clerks generally do that and, uh, we contact different places like Sharing Ministries, Habitat for Humanity, Partners and so on and so forth. Um, and, uh, it has to be a nonprofit, uh, agency of some sort, governmental agency, nonprofit, uh, that type of thing. I, I don't remember the exact, uh, number, uh, Barbara, but I think we have, uh, fifteen, sixteen or seventeen different places to, uh, do that, um, with that. And it's the type of thing that, and if somebody wants it, and, and we use the city as well, uh, from that standpoint. So it's a flexible list and it varies from, uh, year to year, really.
So they think they have an organization that would be good fit. They should contact the, the, uh, office?
Oh, sure, sure, yeah. We're always looking for more. We don't, uh, we're great with that. Also, we use a lot of the same people that, um, uh, the Useful Public Service Program uses at district court and county court, uh, as well. So we have a lot of, lot of common, the work sites that with them as well. Yeah, anybody who wants to, uh, uh, be part of Useful Public Service, we would be, uh, super on board, uh, with that. The main criteria is it has to be, can't be for a private, the business or concern, uh, has to be a nonprofit, uh, or governmental agency type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
And Barbara, just to add on that.
Oh, you bet.
We do have a packet. Um, if anyone is interested in, um, being a part of that, we have a packet that goes over, um, what it is, what it entails. And then we just have, um, them fill out an information sheet, um, and then who's in charge. And as soon as we get that back, um, we're happy to send volunteers.
Great. Thank you very much for that answer. I'll pass it on.
Uh, any other questions, uh?
Uh, Judge, um, oh.
Go ahead.
Alright, so Judge Brown, Roy Anderson here. I just want to, um, say how much I appreciate the teen court activity this year. And, um, it's my hope if, uh, we're past all this, uh, virus stuff come the fall, that, uh, as you said, you're gonna, uh, continue it next year. And I think that's a great thing. So just wanted to let you know how much we support that.
Oh, great. Well, you know, it's a great program. The, the other little casualty of that is although we may try to do this if we can, um, we have in the budget, um, a, uh, provision for an intern, uh, really a teen court intern, if you will. Uh, generally, uh, we had tried to pick out a, uh, senior, uh, who participates in teen court, who's going on in that area of one sort, uh, or another, and, uh, have him work up here and, um, uh, get a little internship in. So we'll still gonna try to do that. I, I don't know. We're gonna have to get with, uh, Martin Maloney and, um, see if we can come up with somebody to, to do that. It just depends on how this virus thing plays out, um, uh, as well. So, but, um, and, and you know, the other casualty for that is we were gearing up to go to a mock trial competition in, uh, Colorado Springs. And, um, that's what we were going to use our May teen court for. Um, uh, everyone was going to pick out a couple of the kids, um, who really wanted to do that and give them an extra practice session for the May teen court. And, um, it, anyway, it just didn't work. So it's just kind of a casualty, uh, for with that. But hopefully we'll have that up and going, uh, next year.
Uh, Judge Brown, this is Judy Anne. Do you see any changes coming in twenty twenty for all of municipal court?
You know, not yet. Um, there's no serious changes in the work that we're aware of. There's always some legislation, uh, that is pending dealing with, uh, municipal courts and just municipalities, uh, in general. But we don't know of any at this point in time, uh, through the Municipal Judges Association and the Clerks Association. Uh, we, we don't know of any significant changes that are going on at, uh, this point. Um, the folks that were pushing, uh, most of those agendas for change in municipal courts have gotten all of those, uh, uh, bills passed, uh, in the last two to three years. So I, 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 I don't foresee any significant changes, uh, Judy. Um, I'm sure there'll be some, but, but right now, we're not aware of any significant changes that would, uh, impact us.
Any other counselors have any questions for Judge Brown?
I would, I would just comment, um, I did run across a young lady when Rex Center was still open, who was doing community service out there. He was doing a pretty good job of it. And I pointed out to her that one of the positives, uh, with all the, even the boys that were coming in and out, she decided that was too bad.
I, I missed that last comment, Doug. It sort of broke up. Can you do that again?
Uh, that's alright. I'll catch it later.
Alright. Any other questions or comments for Judge Brown? Well, Judge, thanks for being with us this morning. Good luck, uh, stay safe, stay at home and just keep us updated on, uh, whatever council can do to help the court anytime, but certainly through this, uh, the coronavirus.
Okay, well, great. Thank you so much, uh, again, except for right now, uh, the invitation is always open. So, uh, please feel free. And I think all of you have my, uh, personal cell number a- as well. So feel free to use that, uh, anytime as well. Alright, thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Okay, coming up next, contract award recommendation for wayfinding sign installation, Jim Shid.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Okay. Alright, so yeah, wayfinding, um, this was included in the packet just over two weeks ago and a lot has changed in the last couple of weeks. So, um, I'd like to present it as is and then we can discuss our options moving forward. So in twenty twenty is the third year of our wayfinding sign implementation. So this is like the third phase. Um, this year, in our budget, we included a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars total, uh, some of that in streets and some of that in OBT. Um, near the end of twenty nineteen, um, we developed, uh, a sign list for twenty twenty. Um, and we, we worked with the dark design team to kind of, um, shape which, which signs would priority for this year. And so we use that sign list and those priority of signs to generate a list that we sent out, uh, in an RFP recently in the, the early part of twenty twenty. Um, and it's replicating the design on our existing signs, um, and installing, um, the signs for twenty twenty. The quantities that we put in the RFP were based on prices we had from the previous year in twenty nineteen. So the intention was to use all of the budgeted money, um, but we, the sign list that was bid was based on prices we already had. And the prices we received through bids were lower than they were last year. So, um, and that's shown in the bid packet that, uh, of the, um, ACSM that we're, uh, recommending we go with, um, that their bid on what we anticipated was actually lower than one seventy-five. So we had some flexibility there to add some signs to, um, to the list that we provided to cover up more of the phase three that we intended to be covering, possibly even covering up some, uh, getting some signs done that we would do next year. So there, because of the lower prices, we were able to, um, potentially cover more than what we intended originally. So I think, you know, I'll be happy to answer any questions about the packet, the way it is and the recommendation. Um, but I think we have a few options, you know, um, you can award as is if you choose. Um, and it is in the agenda for tomorrow's council meeting. Um, we could award a portion of this, maybe choosing the priority signs that, um, are, are near the top of the list. I think, um, I think we had a few that were definitely of the highest priority, maybe parking lot signs was one of those. Um, visitor kiosk at Holly Park, because that's gonna be finished this year. Um, and a few others have kind of risen to the priority list. Um, or, or toward none of it at this time, to delay it later this year or to next year. Um, I guess that's, um, kind of where I'll be looking to you guys for your opinion on that. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll leave it to you to answer, I'll answer any questions you have, um, or take any recommendation for leaving it as is in the agenda or modifying, however you'd like.
Questions from council?
Yeah, so it seems like you're saying that there's kind of three choices in regard to this project. The first or A choice is putting the whole thing off. The second is spending the whole budgeted amount and including additional signage. Or the third option is doing just the signage we approved, but for less than the original budgeted amount. Is that a summary of kind of the three options?
Yes, um, for the most part. I really think we have any, any option we would like. It has not been awarded at this time. So we can really, um, you know, we can do whatever is, is wanted. Um, but yeah, that is an option. We could, the one thirty-three, which is what the, the bid is that we're recommending we go with, that is for the entire sign list we had proposed for twenty twenty. Um, so that, that is a large portion of that is parking lot signage, um, and visitor kiosks. There was three of those in this year and those are probably the, the biggest pieces of that. Um, and so, yeah, an option is to, um, award the one thirty-three, um, as is and do the signs that we had originally planned on and not doing any extra this year to utilize the rest of the budget. That is, that is an option for sure.
So Jim, I have a question. This is Roy. I don't know if you can tell, anyway. Um, so if, I, I guess my question is what kind of relationship do we have with, um, let's see, ACSM, um, I'm just thinking, uh, these signs are all really important and I, I like the whole concept, but not right now because I just, I mean, the, the future's so uncertain. And I think, uh, we need to sort of keep our money in the bank for a while. But I'm wondering when the, um, when the pandemic is over and can we come back to these folks and say, okay, now we want to go, assuming, uh, that our budget's intact and everything looks good at that point?
We would, we would probably have to reissue the RFP, uh, in a later date, but I, I would assume that ACSM would participate in that again. Um, as far as our relationship with them, it's, it's very young at this point. We, we just, you know, interacting with them very little at this point. They seem very professional. Um, but they, they have expressed concern about schedule this year just because they, they are gonna have travel, uh, issues with getting here. You know, if this were a regular year, uh, we, if we were, were to award this, they would probably schedule a trip and be here very soon afterwards to get started. Where this year, um, that's pretty uncertain. And so schedule is a concern as well. Uh, obviously, we would work with them as much as we can to, um, to make that work. But it, we understand it'd be very difficult for them to get here on, you know, short term.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to put the whole thing off.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
I think right now, given the uncertainty of our budget, it just makes sense to me that this, this isn't life and death. So I, I would think let's put this off until we have a better handle on the budget.
I agree.
How far under budget, uh, was the bid?
Um, about forty thousand. Um, so the, we have budgeted about seventy, one hundred and seventy-five thousand and the bid came in at one thirty-three. So.
Did we, did we think any of those signs were safety issues with, were? Did we, did we think any of those signs were safety issues? Were, were there any that are rising to a priority of public safety that we ought to make sure we recognize that before we delay the project?
I don't believe any of them were safety related.
Well, I think so. Some of them were set up to help visitors find their parking spaces. And that may be something that we're going to really need once the, this pandemic is over. We certainly want those people to come back and be able to find a place to park and shop in the downtown.
We could decide that at that point.
If we're talking about delaying though, are we delaying just until, let's say, two months from now and the pandemic's okay and we're, we're more financially stable? Or are we talking about delaying until 2021?
I would suggest we're talking about delaying until we see where the budget is in June.
Uh, that's what my preference.
This is Bill. Yeah, we're doing that. Citywide, we're looking at the budget just on the non-critical projects that can be postponed. At this time, we're just talking about postponing them until summer. And then we can reevaluate with counsel here in another two months and see where we're at as far as projected revenues and that type of thing.
If, if we went that direction uh, and then later determined that we were going to be short of budget and had to cancel it, what would it cost us to cancel that contract?
We don't have a contract.
If, if we went forward with the purchase order on this and then we wanted to cancel it because they were delayed.
We don't want, we don't want to enter a contract until we know we're going to do it. So if, we could probably drag our feet, um, right now for until closer to June, but much much more than that, we're going to have to do a rebid. And I suspect that just about everybody's bid right now for every project has just changed.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should just postpone it until we know where we're at as we come out of this pandemic, whenever that is. And in the meantime, I, I think, you know, the company looked really good. Their bid was good. Your assessment of all the different attributes that you weigh, um, they came out really good. And so I'd like to see you just explain to them our situation, and it's probably the same everywhere in the country. Let them know that we had high regard for them and we want to come back to them when, um, you know, when it's the right time for our city and everybody else in the, in the world. So I, I, you know, I'm just suggesting we maintain a good relationship with them and not let them think that we didn't like their bid or something.
Well, yeah, I would think right now, everybody's pretty understanding as far as dealing with governments and, and just business in general.
So it sounds like what we're saying is to put it and put it aside, postpone it, keep it in the 2020 budget. Not to move it a year, but to revisit it in a few months when ideally we know a whole lot more about the finances for our community and our city budget.
I agree with that.
And so I think we have consensus to remove this from the agenda for tomorrow. That's part of what it is on the agenda for tomorrow evening. And I would think the best thing to do, if there's consensus, is to remove it from the agenda.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Jim, thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, don't, you know, keep it, keep it in the drawer.
No, no, I understood. Yeah. And I, as like Dave said, I think everybody is pretty understanding at this time. And, and even from their perspective, maybe a little grateful that we would delay it just because it would be difficult for them to accomplish as well. So I,
Yeah, we don't want to put their employees at risk any more than our own. So.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to move to letter C, fuel contract award recommendation. And again, Jim Shide, please.
Yes, thank you. Um, so yeah, we issued an RFP earlier this year for our fuel contract, um, which has been an ongoing contract we've had for the last three years, um, with Parish Oil here in Montrose. Um, and the contract just expired. So we issued a, an RFP to renew that contract. The bids are shown in your packet. Um, and, and we did have a, a couple, um, local, uh, fuel suppliers bid on it. And, uh, we, we did request in our RFP that fuels and oils, other fluids were bid together as a package. Um, we do see, you know, efficiencies and just better customer service if we utilize the same vendor to do both. Definitely the biggest, um, um, item is the diesel and gasoline. That is by far largest expense, but there is a lot of oils and coolants and transmission fluids and things that go along with that. And so we did see two, the two local bids were complete. And we, we definitely saw much lower prices pretty much across the board with Parish Oil. I would say almost every item in the bid was, uh, was lower with Parish. And um, we've, we've had a very good relationship with them. I can say for at least the last three years. Um, they are very good to work with. Um, they have very good customer service. Um, and, and in this case, their price is also lower. So this contract would be basically renewing the previous one. Um, it will automatically renew every year up to three years unless we object. So it's a one-year contract. And it would renew automatically unless us or Parish wish to be out of the contract. Otherwise it will go for three years and then we would reissue an RFP again. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions about it.
Sounds good to me.
So Jim, what's the difference between Parish number one and Parish number two?
They gave us some options, um, on different oils and coolants to use. So it's a, a different grade of oil. For the most part, it's, it's a difference in oil going to a synthetic, uh, more synthetic type than we traditionally use. We've, we feel like the number one, uh, option that they provided is, is best for us. That's what we've been using. Um, and if we were to go with a, the higher, the higher price on the option number two is a higher price. Um, we would use that if we were doing like long distance traveling or over the road type trucking, um, where services can be less frequent, where in our case, we have our equipment and trucks of easy access to our own maintenance facility. So there's no need to, to spend the additional money for a different type of fluid. So they just gave us an option. It was not a, a requirement by any means. It was just them providing different options.
The gear lube though is so tremendously more expensive. Is, is that hopefully a typo or something? That it can be more than Parish number two or Master Petroleum by a huge amount?
So in that case, we, uh, we do want that. So in the gear lube, we do want that synthetic. It is, is better for the life to use a higher price oil in that case. So it's kind of contradictory to what we would use for engine oil, but in gear lube, we do request that we use the synthetic oil there. So we don't have to change it, um, for the most part, for the entire life of the vehicle. And so the option they gave there was for a lower grade synthetic. And in, in what we were requesting was the, what they, the price.
And Jim, does this lock us in? These are per gallon prices on the gasoline and the diesel?
No, it doesn't lock us in. So it's based on the rack rate at the time. So they, they provide a price based on what the rack rate was the day before. So we can see, it's a national average, the rack rate, and then their price based on that. So as the price of gas and diesel changes over the year, our price would be that same relationship to what they bid now. So it, it could change over the year. If prices go down, um, our rate would go down as well, the same, um, percentage or same in relation to how the market changes as, as well as up.
Okay. And obviously it's pretty volatile right now. Who knows what's going to happen there? So I was just curious how that worked. Thank you.
Tell me what a rack rate is.
It's, it's a, a set price, um, like a, it's basically a national average. Um, so saying that as of today, the rack rate for fuel, um, in this region of the country is, it would be very near, um, you know, $1.21 per gallon for gasoline. And so, um, Parish is either able to provide it for less than rack rate or more than rack rate, depending. I, I don't know where rack lands in this, but they're able to tell us that they will give us this price based on that current rack rate um, at this time. So if that rack rate goes up tomorrow or next month, then our price would also go up that same amount. So it's just a relationship. So everybody had the same rack price to bid. So all of the vendors that can supply oil or supply fuel are using that same rack rate and then they can give their price based on that for that day.
So is rack acronym?
No, it's just a term. I don't know. I guess I don't know how else to explain it. It's the, the fuel, the rack in the market in general. It's not, it's.
Shelf price.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So in a way they're, they're quoting us like a percentage of rack rate, like hypothetically, one company is saying, we're going to charge you 98% of rack rate and the other starts saying, we, we can charge you 92% of rack rate. I mean, these are, these are each relative to the rack rate.
That's right.
So Jim, I'm curious if there's any sort of volume minimums or if the price varies based on a volume, because I would expect right now we're using less fuel than normal. And at some point it might hopefully return to normal.
They were asked to bid based on an estimated volume of what we use in a year, but it's very clear in the RFP that there's no guarantee on that. So we are going to get that rate no matter how much we use. But we did give them, um, you know, historical volumes, just so they know of what to expect and, and be able to provide that much fuel if, if we do, we do need it. So we gave them anticipated volumes, but again, it's very clear that those are not guaranteed.
Okay, good. Thanks. And I guess I would just question, are we really using that much less fuel right now than normal? I mean, you still have trash trucks running every day, street sweepers, the police. I, have, have we? Have we cut back on mileage at all, Jim? Do you, can you feel that yet?
I don't think so. Um, you know, PD is probably a, one of the largest consumers of fuel. Um, and they're continuing, uh, uh, just about as normal. Trash trucks are another big one and those are continuing as normal. So, um, for the most part, it's, uh, the same. I, I would say very little change at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jim? And if not, are we comfortable going with this, uh, package?
Okay.
I don't have any more questions. I'm comfortable with the package.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Very good. Thanks, everybody. So we will, is this coming up tomorrow or is this, uh, on the 21st?
It'll be on the 21st.
Okay, thank you. And let me get back to, there's one more item and that's yours, Jim. Why don't you go ahead and take?
Okay, so this is a, uh, change order request for, uh, the asbestos abatement contract um, that we recently performed, uh, right there next to City Hall and the Police Department on, um, two structures there. So this is to ARC abatement, which is who did the, um, asbestos abatement for us. So this started because this, we did hire, uh, Grand River Environmental to do an assessment on the two buildings. Um, that basically gives us a plan and a scope for how much asbestos needs to be removed from the building. And they did that. They did their assessment. Um, and then then we had that bid out to, um, asbestos abatement contractors. And they bid what was in that scope. During the removal, there were items found behind, uh, behind walls, under floors that were basically unforeseen. So the, uh, assessment contractor didn't know they were there. The abatement contractor didn't bid them because they were not in the assessment. Um, so there were, um, a few items of unforeseen conditions, basically. That was, uh, additional to their scope. So they found these items, um, and, and then removed them. I mean, but per our direction, we did, we did not tell them to stop. Uh, we, we approved them to continue and remove the additional, um, asbestos. And they did document that. I already took pictures of it. Um, and they well documented what, what came out, what was removed in addition to their scope. Um, and then, and then it just been submitted change over for that. We have, uh, verified that they are using fair rates as far as it does match the rates that are, were in their bid. So they're not gouging us on additional work. And so we are asking for the approval of this contract, this change order to their contract. And, you know, looking back, obviously hindsight is a little easier to look back. We, we should have included a contingency in this project. We didn't because we had that assessment done. So we, we all felt pretty comfortable that having the assessment, um, in our pocket kind of was security. Um, but even that doesn't see unforeseen conditions. And so looking back, um, and if we do any contract similar to this in the future, we would and should have included a contingency that would have covered, um, additional work like this. So, um, but in this case, we are going to have to do a change order to the contract. Um, and I believe it was, um, just over $9,000. Um, so with that, I could answer any questions, um, anything else?
Jim, I did appreciate the fact that you noted on that, that this is coming out of the public safety sales tax.
Yeah. I was just going to say, come, uh, the same place that the original contract was coming from, which is the Public Safety Fund.
Do all change orders like this have to come before counsel? Cause this seems like a bit of a formality. The work's been done, um, already. And the work makes sense. So are we, is it just, does it have to come before counsel? Cause it seems a little bit like we're just rubber stamping this.
Yeah, it wouldn't have if I had included a contingency in the project, but, uh, you, you got, and counsel approved a contract for, um, I believe it was $89,000 total to ARC abatement. And so for us to pay them more than that would be a change to the contract that you had already approved. So.
Okay. So any changes to a contract that counsel has approved, if there's any changes, then those also have to be approved by counsel?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Any prob, I, I would assume all of counsel agrees with this change. It, it needs to be taken care of. If, if we had a 10% contingency, it would have been within that 10%, so. I got a yes from Doug.
Yeah, I'm good with it too.
Thank you.
I'm good. All right.
Any comment, Judy Ann?
I'm sorry, I was doing the thumbs up, so I wouldn't have to turn my mic off and on.
That's a great thumb. Thank you very much. Uh, and with that then, let's move to, uh, staff comments. Anybody want to say anything?
I guess I can start and just kind of give an update, uh, some of the weekend activities. The Police Department hasn't slowed down, uh, in response to some of the life safety critical calls. We had a very, very busy weekend. And, uh, unfortunately, many of those, uh, individuals that we dealt with have either potentially had a COVID test already and are waiting the results. Or they are experiencing, um, upper respiratory symptoms. And so our officers are, uh, really, uh, using their PPE and gloves, mask, glasses, things like that. But it surprised me a little bit as far as how many citizens we are dealing with that, um, that we've had to, uh, had to do that. And so we've made it a, a directive that all arrests officers will, uh, mandatorily be using all of their PPE. Um, next, uh, we, uh, we did patrol throughout the city this weekend, um, in the parks. Um, I realized that, you know, we can't be there all the time and it sounds like there may have been some individuals, um, gathering together where they, where they shouldn't have been. And we're just trying to encourage the public to. And, uh, we're just trying to encourage the public to self-police, you know, you know, in those types of situations. Um, with the help of, uh, Chelsea's crew, we did do a kind of a public service announcement, which you guys are aware of. And then we also, uh, did an inventory of businesses that, uh, at least over the weekend appeared to be operating that were, uh, not allowed per the governor's order. And I may, uh, let Bill talk more about how city staff is, um, really worked quite a bit for the last fourteen days to try to get all this figured out. So, other than that, that's kind of where we stand and, and, uh, we're moving forward.
Chief, are, are, are our first responders or our police that are out there, are they, can they get tested? Are, are those available for our police so they know?
So, excuse me. Um, they, they are a priority for testing if they have a potential COVID nineteen exposure. So we actually have a, a very strict procedure. Uh, we will not, um, submit them for testing unless there's a breach in PPE. Uh, we, we had an incident where we actually fought with an individual this weekend. Uh, but there was not a breach in PPE, so we would not, um, look for getting them tested. It still comes down to whether there are test kits available and we'll receive a briefing this afternoon, uh, from, from the EOC. And then I imagine between Sunday and today, uh, we will probably have more results. As of Saturday, there were still two hundred tests that were pending, uh, for the entire Montrose County. And I think we had eleven so far that we're aware of positive COVID tests. So, it's, it's, it depends. If we have a breach in PPE, if we feel there was some type of a community exposure with one of our first responders and it wouldn't just be police, it would be fire and, and healthcare workers as well, then they would, they would receive priority, um, for testing.
Chief, have we had to quarantine any officers at this point?
Yeah, that's a good question. So yes, we have had to quarantine, um, a few officers. Uh, just to be precautious, uh, we've had a few, uh, potential community exposures. And that means that they may have come in contact or their family members may have come in contact with someone that potentially had COVID nineteen. And so we're trying to be overly cautious and we will quarantine. Um, as long as they don't have any signs or symptoms, then we'll bring them back within seventy-two hours. Um, however, if they do come down with a fever, then we will make sure that they haven't had a fever or symptoms, uh, for, um, seven days and then we'll, we'll bring them back past that point. Um, as of right now, or this coming week, we have all of our police officers will be back on duty. So we actually don't have anyone that meets that criteria, which is, which is awesome. We had, I think four or five, um, in that range of seventy-two hours within the last week that, uh, we've been monitoring. But none of them have, uh, shown any additional symptoms. And any of them that had fevers got over it. And, uh, that seventy-two hours has passed. And so that we'll be bringing them back to work this week.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and let staff talk and then the council, I think will go last today. Anybody else from staff that wants to talk? Chelsea, do you want to give us an update on business?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, and Bill can probably speak to this as well, but we have really been in personal contact with a lot of business owners in the community, um, and working closely with the team that Blaine mentioned and interpreting the governor's orders. And so it's been quite the transition in duties for business services, but, uh, we have a great team working on it. On the other side of things, we're looking forward to your discussion as council tomorrow night about the emergency, um, loan fund. And in preparation for that, we'll be ready to go should you, um, approve that consideration on the agenda. So we're gonna try to get things rolled out in whatever form, um, they may come to small businesses in Montrose as soon as we possibly can. And so we are working behind the scenes on that type of thing to have it ready. And looking forward to being able to assist the community. Communications, I think, um, all things considered are going fairly well. We're trying to get it out in different forms, um, to people all throughout the community. And now we'll be sending it to you via email as well, so that you can all take a look at what's being communicated to the community. And I think I've said it before, but it's really difficult to utilize some of the publications like the press and even the mirror because information is outdated. Um, really quickly, this thing moves fast. So we're trying to keep people updated, um, with the moving target and, um, have loved your comments and helping us improve in that way.
Well, I think you've done an excellent job of putting out current information in a really timely manner. Excuse me. I've really been impressed with the daily updates twice a day. For the community, if you don't know, if you want to know what's going on, City of Montrose, government, Facebook, um, really is the place to look for us right now. You've done a great job. What kind of interest has, have you had from the community at large about our small business loans?
Um, we've had a lot of people reaching out as they've heard us, you know, that we're discussing it and that it will be coming and wants to know how they can be the first to find out and that type of thing. So many businesses are very interested in it, have been asking about it. And we, as we've been having discussions about the unfortunate closure of their business due to the governor's orders, um, we've been telling them to stay tuned and look to what we have, may be having locally, um, as a resource for them. And then I also wanted to note that as things are slowing just a little bit, we may go to once daily updates on Facebook. Um, just so that, uh, we can let staff work on some other items that are rising to the top, like these business services and stuff like that. So if we come to a time where there's a lot of information, we need to go back to twice daily, we certainly can, but we may be transitioning to once daily beginning this week.
Very good. Anybody else on council have a question for Chelsea? All right, moving on. Thanks for everything you're doing, Chelsea. It's really, you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you. Um, Shani, do you want to say anything about budget or is it way too early? Is Shani online?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Uh, yeah, we are still working through what we think the impact is going to be and how much we think we need to reduce our twenty-twenty budget by. Um, currently, we're actually trying to get some communication out to the businesses that have not filed their sales tax returns for February, um, communicating with them directly. So we've been busy in that realm. Um, it's a little early to know exactly what the impact is going to be. Um, given the grocery stores are probably up and our local business, of course, is going to be down. So.
Very good. Um, we look forward to hearing your information as you get it. I sort of suspected it was a little early at this point. But, um, as you know things, please let us know.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Um, who wants to go next on staff? Steven?
I have, uh, nothing. I suspect Bill, uh, Bill will kind of give an update of what, uh, what I've been doing along with the others. So I'll let Bill do that.
All right. Terry, anything? I don't want to miss anybody.
Nothing, um, at this, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne?
Hi, thank you, Council, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would just update you that the city's been partnering and working with nonprofits in our community as they're working to respond to needs in our community. And that includes Hilltop applying for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Hunger Relief Program in order to hopefully deliver meals and have meals available for students over spring break, which is a service that our school district is not able to provide. So we'll hear back about that, um, probably today or tomorrow, hopefully in time to get all of that organized. But, um, kudos to Kendall and Bethany for helping on those lines. Also, just an update that we've been receiving electronic building permit plans and sets, and we've been able to issue those. And we're getting some efficiencies in our process actually that we'll bring back with us after all this is said and done. So, um, it's been a learning process for us and we're able to do inspections as well, still working out a few little kinks. But, um, overall, we've been able to help the community with those processes. Also, just to note that on that great, um, COVID webpage that, uh, Mayor, you were talking about with Chelsea, which is cityofmontrose.org slash COVID nineteen, the Community Resources tab is up and available. And that includes information for people about senior resources, the senior shopping hours that are available in our community. Also food access, mental health, and an array of other things that, like Chelsea said, we're working to keep up to date. Um, new information is always available, but we hope that's helpful for the community. And, um, I think I'll end with that unless you have questions for me.
Counsel? Uh, it sounds like your office is doing a great job, Anne. Keep it up and, uh, look forward to seeing you in person. Soon. And with that, I think we'll turn it over to Bill.
Yeah, hi. Uh, I think the team did a really good job updating you on some of the things we've been working on. I just pulled up the, we have a tracking sheet that we're using with our review group, which is the city attorney, city manager, assistant city manager, police chief and communications director. And we've had, it looks like running down this list, a little over seventy businesses contact us directly, uh, inquiring as to whether they're a critical business, an essential business. How can they stay open? How could they modify their work practices in order to stay open under the governor's orders and those types of things? So we're keeping a running tally of that. And then that's relayed to our police department when they're out and about. They're able to go and talk to people and, and, uh, Blaine and his team have done a great job of not going there with a heavy arm of the law the first time we talk to people. In fact, it's usually a non-PD person contacting the business first. We talk to them, ask them, uh, what they're doing, uh, how they are planning to change their operations to stay in business as much as possible and offer them suggestions. And then if they still don't want to comply at all, then we just, we work our way up either to the attorney's office or through the police department. So PD has done a great job handing out letters. We've summarized the orders a couple of different times as they come out and they keep changing on us. Very quickly, we try to, to keep up with those things and, and relay that out to the community. I would say from all of us talking together, it's, it's really created a strong bond with our, uh, four or five people over the last week. And we've spent a lot of hours together just talking through all scenarios. I think we all have the same goal in mind that we want as many critical and essential businesses to stay functional as possible during this time. But we also need to make sure that we're not too flexible, where we're going against the intent of the governor's orders and the intent of keeping people at home and safe. And so that's really what all of our discussions, uh, are around when we're talking about any of these requests. And I know some of you council members have been asking us questions and talking offline with us as well. And we've tried to respond as quickly as we can so you can get back to your constituents as fast as possible with most accurate information. We've tried to update every time there is a new order. We quickly come together, talk about it and then send out an email to city council, hoping that you have the information you need to talk to your constituents. So that's been our goal. Um, for the most part, all the interactions that I've had with people, uh, I would say ninety percent of them have been very standing, very positive, knowing that the intent is good and they appreciate the time we're putting into it. They appreciate how quickly we're calling them back when they do leave us voicemails or send in an email. Sometimes we get back to them within three minutes because it's on our radar. So we're watching all those things come in. Uh, whether it's text message, email, voicemails or calls directly that we, we answer the phone. So, um, ninety percent that I've talked to have been really, really good. There's always going to be a handful that don't want to comply with anything. And that's remote. Doesn't matter what the rule is, who's passing that rule. It's just human nature. But for the most part, we're seeing good. And anybody else on the team, if they've had, uh, different experience than that, feel free to share that now with city council. Uh, but for, uh, the big picture, um, I've been pleased with the response of our community. Some of the difficult things is coming in the way of what is outdoor recreation? And the governor was pretty detailed in what kind of recreation he's encouraging, uh, with the people in Colorado. You know, and most of it is solitary type that you can definitely do on your own, uh, walking, hiking, biking. Uh, if you're with your family members, go to a park near your house. Don't drive across town to go to some other complex or some other park. Use your neighborhood area because the goal is to keep you as close to your house as possible. Shouldn't be out running around all over the community to go recreate. And he was very clear in one of his last press conferences. And, and actually, uh, I think doing a great job of being a little more aggressive, talking to people from the front range, telling them not to come to the co, the mountain communities in Colorado because you're just spreading stuff to the mountain communities who are already dealing with a difficult situation because we're somewhat isolated. And so once it's in the mountain towns, it's hard to get it out of the mountain towns. And so I know a lot of you council members and staff were watching those, um, those live press conferences as well. We can see when should people chime in. And I think that's good because it helps us be on the same page. Uh, it's very difficult. It's very time consuming. It's rewarding when people talk to us and, and, and say that they appreciate the time we're putting in and see that they're complying. That's rewarding, but it is really difficult. Chelsea mentioned it this weekend, how hard it is. We've been working really hard for five years to build the success of our business community and to do everything we could to make them really successful here in Montrose. And now we have to shut them down. So that's really, really hard to just shift gears and to completely, um, you know, our focus to now it's more of compliance and closures rather than do everything we can to get them be a thriving business in the community. We do advise with everyone. We know it's really difficult and, uh, it's, it's a bad spot for everyone to be in. And hopefully it passes as quickly as possible and we can get back to business as usual. We have had a lot of inquiries, as Chelsea mentioned, on the potential for council approving, uh, business loan fund. There's a lot of talk. In fact, some people have already sent in, um, pre-applications unsolicited. Uh, and they'll just have to, if it's approved, they'll have to go through the application process, uh, starting Wednesday, of course. But, uh, some of, some of the people are getting very excited about that potential. And then I think the other entities in Colorado have done a really good job, whether it's DOLA, Oedit, the Workforce Center, trying to change their systems and practices to be more effective and efficient and timely, uh, with unemployment and all those different things. So people have quicker access to money and to the services that they need. Any specific questions or anything from the review team that you guys want to add that I missed?
Well, I think there are several counselors that have questions. Barb, you have one for, uh, Bill?
I just was curious about golf. It seems like that has been a little bit controversial as an allowed outdoor activity. Um, can you just speak a little about the city's position and understanding of that issue?
Yeah, I thought you were going to go a different direction on that because the controversy we're hearing is why don't we allow them to be fully operational and open like everybody else?
I don't have, I just want to know more information.
No, I know.
I'm not a golfer.
I just thought you were going the other way. So most of the controversy we're hearing as a review team is from our local golf courses other than our own, than the Black Canyon, because Grand Junction's golf courses on the private side are, as of a few days ago, fully operational. They're totally ignoring the governors. Uh, I've talked to the city manager in Grand Junction. The city-owned courses have gone to walking only, just like we have here in our community. And they've, they've restricted the business side of the golf course, but some of the private ones over there, uh, are just refusing to comply with the governor's order. And over there, they're referencing Mesa County Public Health, uh, making those determinations. Every community is different on how they're responding and which entity is in charge of the business enforcement side of things versus the public health side of things. And that's another thing that makes it difficult when residents talk to each other, right? From different communities and they want to know, or business owners want to know, well, how can this business be open in Leadville? And they're not in Montrose? Or why can this be open in Grand Junction? And they're not in Montrose? Or why can this be open in Grand Junction but not in Montrose? That's difficult, but the way we're treating it here in our community is you can go out and golf. And walk and golf by yourself and continue to walk and recreate without congregating. Where things like, the question came up from Judy Ann about Sunset Mesa's closure. Group activities or team sports, that is different because people naturally congregate. They come close together in proximity. They share equipment. They're taking a ball and throwing it to somebody else. Now they just pass whatever's on their hands to the next person that grabs that ball. So we're trying to be more strict on the side of organized sports and team sports. And try to be as flexible as we can on the singular type sports, walking, biking, hiking, walking on golf. We got some kickback, honestly, from the from Cabo Creek and and the bridges. They were both very professional about it. But, you know, they're doing their job trying to promote their business on not allowing carts. But when they described how the carts were were being used, they were giving exceptions for family members. So two people were riding in a cart together. That specifically shouldn't be happening. Even though you're a family, you can't go out in the public and sit two feet apart for five hours out of every day. That doesn't, the perception isn't good. And so we've really talked to both entities and they've been really supportive and understanding. But we are getting some kickback just because some of the other communities aren't being as diligent on the enforcement side. But we want to make sure that our community is as healthy as possible and that we get back to normal as quickly as possible. Did that answer your question? Any other questions from council?
I'm trying. Bill, it really helped me when you and Blaine both explained to me. That within the governor's order, it comes down to shared equipment. And I just hadn't thought about that. I'm thinking about kids going out and playing catch on a on the open field, and that should be healthy and all that. But it's the sharing the ball, sharing a frisbee, sharing the steering wheel on a golf cart. All of those things that are shared. So thank you for using those words. It's the shared equipment makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We appreciate that.
I think it's a very important point, particularly with some of the playground equipments being shut down. I think that's a that's a good point to to get that out is we're trying to stop the handling of from one person to another. So I think that's that's an excellent point.
Yeah, playground equipment, you know, we're monitoring things on the manager's listserv as well with the other communities. Playground equipment is shut down everywhere. And we we put tape up, I believe. Jim can correct me if I'm wrong on there. We're trying to keep people off of it. We started with a softer approach with signage, and then as the governor got more aggressive on playground equipment, then we actually, we roped it off and said, this is closed. That brings up another one that's similar, I think, public restrooms. And we've had, Barbara was asking and some other constituents have been asking about public restrooms. And not really for the convenience of people who are using our trails and open space, because you can plan your day around that. Unless you actually have an emergency, but I can't help those types of things. But the homeless population is the concern that we've heard. And so Jim and and Mark really worked together quickly, and we're trying to do the best we can. We we don't feel comfortable opening our public restrooms because we can't have enough people there to maintain the sanitary conditions. And and we've beefed up our janitorial contract as much as we can. But we also have to look out for our contractors as well and our employees. So and then just general public who go in. And we had an issue in the past with homeless hanging out in the restrooms and kind of taking over the restrooms. And I think that would, we all think that would happen again if we were to open those. So what we've done is we. Jim and Mark strong-armed some of the local providers of portable toilets and hand washing stations. They're a little nervous about providing those to us because they're worried about vandalism, but we've told them if it gets vandalized, we'll work with them to replace it. But that we really think it's important to provide some type of hand washing stations and some portable toilets in the areas. River Bottom, Centennial Plaza, La Raza Park area, where we know homeless people tend to congregate. And just to try to encourage them to wash their hands and and to provide that kind of sanitary condition for them as well. I know that Barbara and I had lengthy discussions on that. You might want to add something to that.
Thanks, Bill. When we first made that decision to close public restrooms, I was thinking about my convenience when I go out for a walk. But then I quickly realized that with the library being closed and the rec district being closed and businesses being closed. That we were looking at, I think, a public safety and health issue by not having places where where folks could use the restroom. And wash their hands safely that didn't have a home. So I really appreciate you working on a solution to that. And understood why we couldn't reopen our public restrooms, and I really appreciate the the solution.
Yeah, but I can add a little bit to that. So part of our issue and concern with getting those installed was the supplies. So toilet paper, paper towels, soap, those things are a hot commodity right now. And and our vendors also have a limited supply. So they are doing their best to keep those stocked. But even as of, they were installed last Thursday, toilet paper disappears as soon as we put it in there. So we we're going to continue to stock them as well as we can with the understanding that. You know, if we were to keep up with as fast as they left, that we would be without supply as well. So we're we're, the hand wash stations actually seem to be doing well so far. But just with the understanding that some of the supplies are going to disappear and we can only keep up with so much. So, but they are.
Thanks, Jim. Any other, I I know some of the counselors, Barbara, you had a question for Lisa?
Yeah, I just did update Lisa on elections and specifically, so we all have the same information to pass on. And maybe this is useful again tomorrow night, but where where can people drop off their ballots? Do they have to be dropped off between certain hours? And where could someone get a replacement ballot if they can't find theirs or somehow didn't make it to their current address?
Okay, so our the best way to deliver a ballot is either by mail, if that works. Otherwise, the Dropbox in front of the Montrose County Building, right across the street from the post office, that's open twenty-four seven. And we are collecting ballots from there on a regular basis. We are getting the mail on a regular basis as well. So we are getting ballots. We've got about three thousand so far that we're processing. We have a small but dedicated crew here. I'm actually in the election room. We're using the Cascade Room, so we each kind of have a corner, so we are socially distancing. That's also slowing down our processing a bit. We used to have two people, two judges at a computer verifying a signature. Now our ballots are going from one judge to another, so we're doing two signature verifications. As is required. And then if there's a discrepancy, we bring in a third. Anyone wanting to get a replacement ballot can call me directly. My number is nine seven oh two four oh one four two two. Or they can email the cityclerk@cityofmontrose.org. We've given out a few replacements already. Or sometimes we find them in our undeliverables. They just didn't get forwarded on and came back to us. So we are accessible. We're here every day, maybe not ten hours, but for sure during the day. And we've been setting up times for people to to get their ballot and vote. Our our return is kind of, we're kind of in a lull. We're getting a few hundred ballots a day. We started out kind of strong and we're hoping it picks up toward the end. So we are encouraging people to vote. Some people are getting letters saying that we couldn't verify their signature or their signature was missing. And the ones that we couldn't verify, you can email the completed form back to us with the picture of your ID. But to get your signature on the ballot, we'll have to arrange a time to meet with you, but we're working through all those issues. And it's going very well under the circumstances. We're still on schedule. We will have results the evening of April seventh.
Which to that point, people cannot put them in the mail on April seventh. They need to be received by your office on the seventh. Do you have any guidelines for how long people can use the US Postal Service for delivery? Or at what point it's too late for that?
I would say after Wednesday, it's best to bring it to a Dropbox. We're, we were going to contact Chelsea and ask her to get that message out on social media as well and all the avenues we can. But yeah, at some point, if we don't have the ballot in hand by seven PM on Election Day, we can't count it. And that is excluding the signature verification. If we sent a letter about signature verification, a missing signature or one that didn't match. Those can be resolved by April fifteenth. So if somebody does get contacted about the signature on their ballot, they should absolutely contact us. Because we can work that out where their ballot will count.
Thank you very much for all your work on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Judy Ann, you had a question for David Breeze?
Yes, I think David Breeze is with us today, isn't he? David, do I get an answer?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great, David. I'm reading in some of the other newspapers that the smaller communities are having problems with. People flushing the sanitary wipes down the toilet. And it's causing plugups in their system as well as when it gets to the treatment plant, those are causing problems. Is that an issue we have here in Montrose?
Absolutely. Specifically more probably on the private service line problems. The first section of sewer that those wipes have to go through is the customer's responsibility to maintain. And so those, a lot of times those hang up or catch in those systems. Once it gets down to the wastewater treatment plant, we haven't had any specific issues. Primarily due to, we just recently upgraded our bar screen, which is a screen that screens out all of that stuff. At the beginning of the wastewater treatment process, so it doesn't get into the pumps and stuff like some of the other communities have issues with. But but again, for protection of everybody's individual service lines and stuff. Really strongly discourage using anything other than toilet paper and flushing those down down the toilet. Because it can create problems in your service line, and it's never a fun thing to have a sewer backup into your house. And cause problems.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Thank you, Judy Ann. Any more comments from staff?
Is there anything in particular you want us to prep for the PIO report tomorrow at the council meeting? That isn't already going out in our press releases, social media, that type of thing?
I can't think of anything. I think that, again, the updates that Chelsea's been putting out have been very timely, very informative. I think this, I think the city is doing a fantastic job of communicating right now. Hats off to everybody in the OBT Department. They're all working really hard and I think doing a really great job.
Absolutely. Chelsea, and I apologize if I've missed it, but a few people have asked me if there is a master list. Of businesses, retail businesses that are open, especially our small businesses. And I feel like that changes so, it it feels like it changes a lot. But maybe helping folks think outside the box for where they can get things they need in our community.
Yes, so I've got a little guy here right now. Sorry, he's he's talking. We have a list that's being updated by, actually, an employee at DMEA who's keeping restaurant, a list of the restaurants that's open. And so we actually talked with the county and some of the other PIOs about sharing it out on social and trying to keep that updated. But you're right, it's a little bit of a moving target. As far as some of the retailers. That, unless you're hearing otherwise, hasn't been much of a question, now that the new orders have had a little bit of time to settle in. But if you're hearing things like, you know, is a hardware store open or that type of thing, we can certainly add those updates. But yes, it is actually on my list this week to get it a little bit more visible on social media for some of the, at least the restaurants and those type of businesses.
Thank you for that. I'm finding the list that's in the Daily Press of restaurants. Has been helpful to me because it not only tells me who's open and who's not, who's doing takeout, who's not, but their hours. Because obviously, some of them have had to change their hours of operation. And so I really appreciate that list. I'm hoping that your list agrees with that that's in the Daily Press, Chelsea.
Yes, we'll have to take a look at that. I bet you it's coming from one of the same places, but I'll try to verify.
And any other comments from council, please?
Can I add one thing?
Please.
As as council members are hearing from particular businesses, just let us know. Text us or call us and then we can communicate with them directly. One of the difficulties early on in the last couple of days was businesses were proactively sending letters out to all of their clients and customers. Announcing themselves as an essential business and that they're they're open. And some of those, we had to actually go back and tell them, you're not, and you'll need to tell your customers you're not open. So as you're hearing things from your constituents, just let us know and we'll respond as fast as we can.
Thank you.
So I got a question or maybe a request for Shaney and and Bill. The next work session is the twentieth of April, I think. Is that right, Lisa? Yeah, so so I was just thinking it would be helpful, I think, for council to. Kind of get an update on where you're going with the budget study or whatever you want to call it. How we can conserve money, what you think our income will look like. And so that we can sort of all get an idea of how to plan for indeterminate future. I mean, we don't know if this will end in a month or or more. And so I thought that would be really helpful for us. That's all.
I've asked department heads, and they've already provided a list of projects within every department that could be delayed. Either a few months or even to twenty twenty-one. And so I can summarize that and email to council just to let you know what we're hearing as well. It's a little too early, I think, to make final decisions on moving big projects to the whole next year. Like we mentioned earlier, but I'll definitely email that out to all of you so you kind of can start thinking the same way we are. About what might be on the horizon for conservation of our resources. Talking to Shaney, and correct me if I'm wrong, on the revenue side of things. We 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 really need to see what March's impact is. And so probably mid-April before we see, you know, we know February data, but February was really before all of these closures took place. So once we see March's data, because businesses still have to remit their report. And so we shouldn't say, oh, and how that's being affected, even if they don't have to give us the money, if they're under that two million dollar threshold for annual sales.
I agree with what you said. Yep. We're actually, we've got several businesses that didn't file their returns for February, so we're getting in touch with them today and tomorrow. So we at least need to know what we're looking for. And we also want them to know that they have to continue to collect sales tax from their customers.
Yeah, that might be a good thing tomorrow night on the PIO, just to reemphasize. Because some people might not understand or appreciate that. But so, yeah, I was just thinking the twentieth is. You know, roughly a month away, and so hopefully we'll have some feeling. And I thought it might be kind of useful to have a public discussion at that point, just to get a better picture of. What the priorities are and what things can be delayed, just like Bill was saying a moment ago.
The twentieth is a long time away. We usually don't, I mean, three weeks, I don't know, maybe, let me start over. Three weeks, three weeks seems like a long time not to have any kind of a meeting where we can all touch base and ask these kind of questions. In a public meeting that is open for the public to see. I know we can pick up the phone one-on-one and talk to to you, Bill, or to Stephen. But I find this format really useful and really transparent, and I just wonder if we shouldn't plan another work session before the twentieth.
I think that, I I think that's probably a good idea. Let's sort of, let's think about that over. Let's sort of, let's think about that overnight and we can talk about it together at the end of the council meeting tomorrow night would be my suggestion. But let's think about that, think about a date, what would be best. Get the advice of staff, obviously, but I think that'd be a good thing to discuss at the end of the council meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. You're, Barbara, you're mentioning, you're thinking of a work session, right? So not a meeting where council can make a bunch of decisions, but just to have a discussion?
I am thinking about a work session, not a formal meeting where we vote on things, but a work session. And as we know, work sessions are, the public can watch our work sessions and listen live or later. So I think they're helpful in that regard because we get the opportunity to ask these questions and get the right information out to a lot of people. It keeps all of council and staff on the same page as opposed to a bunch of private conversations. So yes, I'm talking about a work session. Even if the agenda is more like updates from department heads, then specific action items that will come to council at a later date. Just more of an opportunity to hear updates and ask questions. Publicly. I know we can always call and ask questions, but in a public setting.
Okay. We could just do that tomorrow night then, just let us know.
But I think if we put it on the calendar and plan on it, it's also very, much more transparent than just saying, oh, tomorrow we're gonna have this meeting. But instead say, recognizing that the next one isn't for three weeks, we're gonna have one on April 13th or whatever the date may be. It also would give us a chance to, yeah, like, like Roy said, start just thinking about what's coming next.
Well, and I think it's important for us to be visible within the community and this is the best way for us to be visible. And, and I think it, it's good to hear, it's one thing to read messages on social media. It's much different to actually hear people talking and having discussions. So I think it's a really great idea, Barbara.
And we'll, we will discuss that at the end of the meeting tomorrow night.
Any, Doug, any final comments?
No, I agree with that meeting, but other than that, nothing else.
Judy Ann?
Thank you. No, I, I just, I feel really good about where the Montrose community is right now. I think that the city has done an excellent job of responding to this COVID-19 situation. I, I just really admire particularly the staff members who are working so many extra hours for this. I, I just, I just find it mind-boggling, all these things that are happening. I also would like to say that I'm feeling pretty good about our community. I see a lot of people out walking, exercising. I'd like them to try to stay healthy. And yes, I know this is difficult for all of us. It's, it's hard on some of us mentally as well as the physical things. And I love it when you all lean forward to read your screens. This is a whole different experience. So we've learned a lot technology-wise, if nothing else, this last month. So thank you.
Yeah, several of us are gonna need glasses, I think, working so much screen time. Talking about that.
Do we have a vision for our employees?
We do, as a matter of fact.
Good to hear. Roy or Barbara, who wants to go next?
I don't have anything in particular, just hats off to the staff for all their hard work. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, somebody, either the president or, I forget now, somebody on TV made the comment that this is like war. And people are really responding and behaving sort of in that manner. And I think we're all coming together, we're all supporting our leaders. And a lot's coming down from the governor and I know that staff has to work hard just to keep up with it all, but it's commendable. So thanks, appreciate it.
I'd like to thank everybody that participated today. Anybody out in the audience listening, thank you for tuning in and, and hearing what we're doing. I, I echo the, everything council and staff has said, staff and all the employees. And when I say staff, I want the, everybody that works for the city to understand we're talking about you. You are all doing a great job. From Bill Bell down to everybody that's out there working. Council is, I want the community to know that council is communicating among ourselves in a legal manner. We are visiting with staff and getting updates. We are certainly getting phone calls and emails from the community. And I know we're all working to answer those just as quickly as we can. Just be safe out there and there'll be, the city council meeting will be on Zoom again tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. And I look forward to having lots of community input. There will be a time for the community to ask questions and make comments. So it will be much more interactive tomorrow night. And with that, I would say, thank you all for being here and have a good afternoon. And we'll talk and see everybody tomorrow night.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, everyone.
And so remember to sign out. There should be a button in.